Gulf County Board of County Commissioners is bound session.
Come on in, prayer please. Lord, in the name of your son, thank you for another beautiful day that you've stowed upon us. Our enjoy. Lord, we ask that you be with this board this morning as we go about conducting the business behind people. Lord, we also ask that you bless our country. This past week, all these people, always have prayers for our law enforcement, two young men instantly lost their lives on this earth this weekend for reason, for understanding. Lord, also remember the Bram family, a former county commissioner sat on this board for many, many years past, and there's his family up in Weahitka, fourteen-year-old boy. We don't know why. We don't have the answers. Ask that you comfort these families. Lord, again, bless our military, bless our law enforcement, bless this great country, and bless this all in your son's precious name. Come on in, please, for a pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't give me one this week. Didn't give you one? No. Good morning to all. Thank you for taking time to come out and be with us on our regular meeting, June the tenth of 2014. There's Novak, you and Ms. Judy, it's an honor and a pleasure to have you with us this morning. And a young lady back here, Ms. Dorothy, good to have you with us. All right, as we begin the meeting, does anyone in the audience, if you have business before the board, you will be given time, you'll be recognized and given time. Do we have any questions concerning our consent agenda or the information packet? Anyone in the audience have any concerns about that? All right, if not, anyone with staff, any questions on the consent or the information packet?
Page seventeen.
Yes. Okay. All right, now I'll turn to the board. Does anyone on the board have any questions with the consent or the information packet? Well, I'm going to ask it, in the agenda, in the consent agenda, page seventeen, that we pull it from the consent agenda. I think we're ahead of ourselves on that. Ask it. Pull this from the... All right. Questions on that? All right.
Want to talk on seventeen now?
Well, I just want it just pulled, I think it was put in there. If you want to discuss it, we can. The commissioners, I think it's just got ahead of itself. Mr. Butler, would you like to shed any light on it?
We need, I haven't seen the business on this yet. And we should be back in front of you in two weeks.
That's fine.
All right. This time I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
A motion by Commissioner Jaeger, second over here by Commissioner Smiley. Any input from the public? About any from any of the other board members? No opposition? Motion passed five and oh. All right, let's go into our county staff business. Start over, Mrs. Roberts, do you have anything before the board this morning? Thank you. Herring? Ms. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of items, please. We've received a request from Opportunity Florida for the board to consider a letter of support for Opportunity Florida and their efforts with the Northwest Florida RASIC and their continued efforts on the renewal of the regional areas of economic consent. For the board's consideration, I have a draft prepared.
David, just hold it. Let's see if we get this expected here.
Your office may just get old and cranky.
Oh, man, don't talk about that. We did disturb that podium last week. All right, people, just bear with us, we'll...
There you go.
That's not the ones.
I'm thinking of the old movie days. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Now, we probably broke your train of thought. We'll go back to you, Miss, on there.
Yes, sir. The Opportunity Florida has asked for the board to consider a letter of support in reference to the efforts of Opportunity Florida, as well as their efforts to get an extension on the Northwest Florida regional areas of critical economic concern. And I have one prepared for your signature if the board still approves.
All right.
These RASICS across the state are given special privileges, it's worked well for Gulf County and other counties within this specific RASIC. They do different projects. One of the projects is the internet-based, a twenty-five-million-dollar project that they had been working on, and other projects, and other things that Gulf County gets benefit on from this. So it needs to be extended. We're still not out of economic concern here in Gulf County, creating jobs and that type of thing. So I would support that, putting that in form of a motion to support that.
Okay, to support a letter of support. The motion by Commissioner Jaeger, do I have a second to this motion? Got a second from Commissioner Smiley, okay. Any input from the audience? None? Does there any further discussion from any of the board members? There's no opposition, this motion passed five and oh for the letter, and I'll sign this.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
My next item... I'm sorry, that's kind of crazy, is a letter that, or an email that I received from the Bay Gulf Homes Washington Regional Transportation Partnership. We currently have Commissioner Jaeger and Tuan Kapinski as our representatives on that committee. Their requirements require that all representatives are elected officials and board-approved. And so we need, I need a recommendation and approval from the board for two representatives for Gulf County, as well as one alternate, and they must all be elected officials.
That's the question, elected officials?
Elected officials.
Guys, this is an important board, too. This is where you get the trip funding from. We've had billions of dollars that come through this trip, these trip funds, and this board recommends the DOT for these trip funds. So it's important, board, we need to continue. I'm just, I'm just not familiar with who else to put. I didn't realize they had to be elected.
I didn't either until I got this email. Tuan's been on there for several years, and I've never gotten any notification until now that it had to be an elected official.
Let me ask a question here. We may have to have the attorney research this, but elected commissioner, first of all, Commissioner Jaeger, are you willing to sit on this board, or you need...
I'm fine if that's the board's, if the board wants me to.
All right, we're coming, I'm just seeing, I know we can't have two on there, then we've got sunshine problems. What about the city of St. Joe, or one of our, we're just, in his presence, the sheriff, that he sat on it? I'm just using as an example.
It can be any.
Any county, elected or municipal elected?
It says all representatives will need to be an elected official and approved by the board of county commissioners. It does not specify.
Okay. Hold, just a minute, Mr. Butler.
Mr. Chairman, historically, the counties had two. For a long time, it was Bill and Bill, Bill Williamson, Bill Trailer. It's an earliest meeting.
It is?
It is an earliest meeting. The reason for, I was the liaison, now Tuan's the liaison, that's the reason she's on the board. But it takes two elected, and it should be two from this board, and one liaison, any of your staff member.
Wait a minute, we'll go back to the word elected again.
Yeah, they're looking for two, they're trying to fill out two slots, the elected slots.
It says that two representatives and one alternate is what they're asking for in the email. It doesn't say anything about liaison at this time.
Okay, that's the two elected positions.
Here, I... It's an open meeting, okay, it's advertised, so two board members can sit. I'll stand corrected on that.
And I'm fine if somebody else wants to sit on that, Mr. Chairman, my plate's full, but I'll continue if the board wishes, but if somebody else wants to sit on that, I'm fine with that.
I'll sit if no one else wants. I like that. I figure you would, I'm on everything. See, that, I've got two to four in the morning, I have some spare time, so that'll take care of that.
You put me down for that all day.
All right, we'll do.
I like that.
Okay. All right, okay. Any input from the...
We need a motion to that.
Yes, sir, we do.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
All right, we've got a motion over here by Commissioner Jaeger. Commissioner Smiley, any questions concerning this from the audience? Any questions? Board members? Motion passes five and oh. The two county representatives will be Commissioner Jaeger, McDaniel, sit on this.
And Mr. Smiley will be the alternate, correct?
Smiley will be the alternate, and take care of whatever documents or notifications has to be made.
Yes, sir, I'll take care of it.
All right, thank you. All right, you still have the floor.
That's all I have.
Okay, go around here, Ms. Jenkins, come on up.
Good morning. I'll begin with the tax revenue for the month. If you look on the third, I include something we call internally a quick... So as the first seven months of the year, with the exception of October, like in three thousand... Ahead of last year. So for the day through September, we need nine hundred and sixteen thousand, one seven dollars and eight...
Do it.
Last year, this, during the major season, I said seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and five cents. So if everything... So we're staying strong with our goals. You'll see also on that page, this is we're going into planning for next year. We were looking at our shoulder season, which is... March, April, May, we're pacing at a seven percent higher, seven point one... Last year, our winter, I wanted to kind of include... So that's how I'm looking at it every month, but our shoulder... Lowline our marketing... That said, we have some new staff members on board. Passer, we didn't know, we didn't know, last three weeks, and hours, other season, health. Monday, we have Ash, Ash is an... Ash.
So moved, Mr. Chair, she's got the funds available, and it's something she sees in need.
Got a motion by Commissioner Jaeger, we have a second by Brian. Okay, any input from the audience? Any further discussion? Board members? Opposition of this? I think this motion passes five and oh. All right, next.
... We are selling items... At the welcome center, cost, happy to know, pass all. Also selling driving permit, opportunity... I like to use my staff talk, one of...
Can we talk about that a little bit? Because generally, we have good seasons with beach driving, have very few issues. The sheriff's done a good job patrolling and those type of things. I think since we've been selling that seven-day permit, though, it's put some people on the beach that normally don't know how to drive in the sand and that type of thing, and it's causing them some issues. I think we still can offer the year pass at the welcome station, but I don't think that we need to offer that reduced-rate, seven-day pass because of the issues that it's causing with the, with the, I don't want to put all the blame on the tourists, but they just don't know how to drive on that sand, so they get up speed, some of them will drive down there with two-wheel drive, and it's a problem. So if y'all don't mind, I'll even put that in form of a motion, is let's rescind that seven-day, and Mr. Attorney, I don't know if we'll have to do that through the ordinance, or if we can just make a motion to rescind the seven-day permit?
You can establish a policy today, but I will submit something for the twenty-fourth that memorializes you rescinding, taking that back.
The board doesn't mind, let's take, let's do away with that seven-day permit, it's causing us a few problems.
If I can, Commissioner, if you can just make it effective, because it is instituted, it is being marketed, it is being sold, but I will introduce that on the twenty-fourth. If you all ratify it, then make it effective date after that, say July first, so the folks coming down have that anticipation.
The other issue...
Yeah, I think we need to increase that, to reset to two, from two fifty to five hundred, and that's the deterrent. That gets everybody at least buying the permit. Locals is still at the, what, thirty dollars? I believe locals is still at thirty dollars, so idea there being is locals already pay into the property tax and sheriff's budget and that type of thing. So I think we should increase that, excuse me, to five hundred. And I'll include that in my motion to do those two things.
Now, with the commission's approval, I'll advertise that and submit it to you all for your consideration in a public hearing at your twenty-fourth meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
All right, we've got a motion here.
I second the motion.
A motion by Commissioner Jaeger, second by Commissioner Smiley, one from the audience on this. I have a question here from the, you say locals, and that's Gulf County, Gulf County, all right, we're going to eliminate, this is all about three items here in one, we're going to eliminate the seven days, what will it become? Annual? That's for out of county? Okay, all right, I'm just trying to get, we won't have any confusion on this, okay.
And when we say locals, anybody that owns property in Gulf County, you know, paying property taxes.
If you pay property and own property here. All right, I just want this, there's understanding, they snuck, come back, and people go to calling and saying, wait a minute, we were... Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jaeger, got a second by Commissioner Smiley, we sure did. Anyone from the, and from the audience? Any further discussion? Board members, any opposition? Motion passed five and oh. All right, Ms. Jenkins, you still have the floor.
You were items, Mr. Chairman, from the spring, that we had a few weeks, we tremendous coverage. Also, we found yesterday that... Articles. I've been approached by the...
Got a motion by Commissioner Jaeger.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brian. Question from the audience, any one question? Where's this, you say the July La Force Street dance, now where will it be held? Okay, be in the city of Port St. Joe, okay, I didn't know, might be Indian Pass or somewhere. Okay, that's great. Any other members? Any opposition? If not, this motion passes five and oh.
I think, Mike Lomore, you table, you okay with it now?
Yeah, we can move forward with it.
Okay.
At this point, and then she can work with it.
Okay. So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Jaeger, we've got a second by Commissioner Mike Lomore. All right, any input from the audience? Any question on this? Opposition? Opposition? Motion passed five and oh.
Jennifer, while you're up there, let's go ahead and start getting in process. I know I've discussed it with the TDC, discussed it with this board, and we've got a city-county meeting tomorrow, and we'll discuss it there also, but I think we need to go ahead and put in motion the process to add that one penny. I think everybody has conceptually said, you know, this is a good thing to do with it for our parks, for our baseball and softball fields and those types of things. It's going to take a little bit of time for the attorney to go through the process, so if we could, could, Mr. Attorney, I know I've got the conceptual from both the TDC and this, but can we go ahead and get a motion? Do you need another motion to proceed with the, whatever we need to be doing to initiate that one penny?
A motion to the staff would be helpful, Commissioner.
Okay.
Tomorrow, you all have a workshop at ten-thirty, and on the agenda is the TDC, the sports complex, the city property. I know Ms. Jenkins has brought up at the TDC meetings most recently, the mayor's obviously on the TDC and has taken it back to his commission as well. So instruction to the staff so that we move forward would be great, and then obviously we'll advertise that ordinance at a later date for public hearings before this commission decides whether to implement that tax or not.
So moved to proceed to initiate staff to go ahead and proceed with that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger. Second his motion. Second. Second by Commissioner Mike Lomore. Input from the audience? Opposition? Not. Motion passed five and oh to proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Whitfield?
On this time.
All right. Larry? All right, Mr. Danford. Both of them. All. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning, commissioners. On behalf of the Veterans Service Organization here in Gulf County, I know there's a lot of the media, a lot of things going on, I have put actually a letter in front of you from the VISNA director, which is the director of Veterans Healthcare for our area, which is North Florida, South Georgia, Vision Care Network. And in that letter, you'll see where they actively reduce reducing wait times for veterans to receive from seventy-four days to forty-two days. This letter was actually sent to me the last part of last week when I was not in the office. I had it printed for you this morning. About five minutes before I walked in here, I got an update. The main update is on the Gainesville area, which is where most of our people go for primary healthcare, Gainesville and Lake City area. The wait times that was at forty-two days in the last two weeks has been reduced to four point seventy-three days for primary care. The mental health, which is the PTSD, is one of the biggest things that we're seeing now for our brothers and sisters coming back from the war. The mental health now is down to one point eighty-nine days, and currently in our vision, there are no mental health patients awaiting healthcare. One thing I do want to tell you, the big media push is on the fifty-seven thousand veterans that have not received healthcare. I want to let you know that there are fifty-seven thousand within the entire system that have not received healthcare, but by the same note, there are sixty-three thousand veterans in the last ten years that have applied for healthcare, been afforded the opportunity to go to an appointment and have not shown up for healthcare. So the nerves are a little bit skewed there, I think, based on everything that we're seeing. But what I want you to do, I want you to know, on behalf of the constituents that you talked to, is that the Veterans Healthcare System in this area is alive and well, and there are significantly reduced wait times, and as you read in the letter, a lot of the veterans have called in to say, you've saved my life by being afforded healthcare in this vision, and I think this vision's doing very well, and we are one of the top visions within the nation providing healthcare. And I wanted you to know that, and if the veterans have any questions, you can tell them how to reach me, I'd be proud to talk with them. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to second that.
Sir? All right, thank you. Joe, thank you for a job well done, and maybe some of the people in Washington, they used to come down and listen to this. I helped them go there a little bit, but I know that...
Good luck with that.
Yeah, yeah. We're well aware of how much they recognize the locals. All right, is that all? All, all right. Thank you, dear. All right, we'll go to our attorney. Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I have today is to simply update the commission and the public. Michael Spunlin will be joining us on our agenda for June twenty-fourth. For those that wish to attend and hear his presentation with regards to his countywide data research and district-wide voting, he'll be joining us on the twenty-fourth. If he provides us with any kind of summary of his statement in advance, I'll provide that to the commission, also make it available to the clerk's office that could be distributed amongst the community in preparation of his presentation. The second item I have, Commissioner Jaeger alluded to it earlier, just wanted to remind the commission and the public as well. Tomorrow at ten o'clock, the Port St. Joe Port Authority has called for a special meeting. They've invited the county, we talked about last week, at your special meeting, and they've invited the city as well. They've provided an agenda that's been sent out with your public notice that was distributed yesterday. That agenda was attached to the public notice, and that will be at the EOC building directly behind the administration building here, starting at ten o'clock tomorrow. Immediately following that, there is a workshop with the city of Port St. Joe for you commissioners at ten-thirty, or to start immediately after the port authorities' meeting is adjourned. That agenda is also placed on the public notice, there's seven items on there that will be introduced at that meeting at ten-thirty tomorrow morning. The next item I have, fact president Brian Deloge wanted to thank the commission and Commissioner Jaeger for... Commissioner Jaeger for sending that resolution of support as he runs for NACO president next month, and he asked me to pass that along to you all. The next item I have is with regards to your road abandonment policy. I had distributed a proposed policy to you Commissioners with the discussions and inquiry I've received in my office, most recently with plats and subdivisions that have been submitted. Over the years, we have, I don't want to say antiquated, but we have a bare bones policy from, I believe, 2000. 14 years later, I've proposed a new policy for easements, rightaways, roadways, plats, and the proper process for abandoning those or discontinuing them. If you all recall, recently you had Cinnamon Hill come before you all from Beacon Hill and asked you all to abandon those roadways. You did that. After public hearings, we adopted resolutions, and those roadways and rightaways were abandoned. Subsequent to that, we had discussed adopting a new policy that would make the costs and the notice and the distribution of information throughout the community more standardized and the procedure to do that. You all have that policy. What I will do is I'll include that in your agenda for the next meeting, give the community opportunity to review it as well, and ideally have you adopt some form of that policy. I have some additional comments with regards to White City parcels the commission asked about the last meeting. I'll give the administrative an opportunity to discuss the response to the proposals, and I have some additional comments I can offer to you with regards to those. That's all I have at this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Butler?
Mr. Chairman. My first item, I've given you each a copy of about four different items. First one is bid tabulation sheet for the supervisor of elections building. We had budgeted about $15,000 for the project. Maintenance went in and spent less than $15,000 in getting that jig was taken off and the decking repaired and some other work we had to get rid of the flat roof. But on this bid tab sheet, you see you've got three bids, one being for gavellum roofing, the other one for painted roofing. The difference is a 25-year guarantee on the gavellum and a 40-year guarantee on the painted. And we have money in the budget. My recommendation to you is go with a low bid, having to be a local bidder, Rodney Hall Roofing Incorporated, for the painted, $28,840.
So, move, Mr. Chairman, for the low bid. Recommendation.
I second that, Bill. Motion by Commissioner Jaeger, second by Commissioner Mike Lemoore. Any input from the audience here? A question, Mr. Butler, if you would. Give the difference between the, what do you call it, gavellum?
The gavellum is the alloy.
Public, where they all know.
It's a galvanized and aluminum alloy. It's typically just a gray colored roof. You see a lot of gavellum roofs. It's got a 25-year guarantee. The painted roof is also a gavellum roof, but with a coat of paint on it, and it's got a 40-year guarantee for another $4,000. You can pick up another 15 years.
That's what I want the people to know, is $4,000 difference. Okay. All right. Thank you. We've got a motion here. Anyone else from the board, any questions on this bid here? And it's under the amount that we allocated. Opposition? Motion passes five and oh to award the bid to Rodney Hall Roofing for the painted roof. Okay?
Yeah.
Next.
Mr. Chairman, also in front of you is a copy from NACO, and the urgency of this is we have until the 13th, until Friday, to turn this back into NACO. The county commission has said you are in support of Brian Deloge, the second VP of NACO. And in filling this out and getting in by Friday, it allows the chairman to, well, he's got more than got to sign it. We've got to get it into NACO in July. It allows the chairman to take up the paperwork in order to vote. Also, I've talked with Commissioner Smiley, he's agreed to be the alternate, so I went ahead and filled out. The clerk has the original for the chairman to sign, but if the county commission allows the chairman to sign and Mr. Smiley to be the alternate, and that way we get the vote in in July.
Okay. Need a motion to that?
Yes.
So, move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger. Second by Commissioner Mike Lemoore. Question from anyone in the audience? Anyone? The other board members? Opposition? Motion pass five and oh. Ms. Leneer, after the meeting, whatever documents. All right, thank you, dear. Mr. Butler?
Mr. Chairman, next is Wimaco Place. We advertised twice for the sale of two lots in Wimaco Place in White City. We received no bids. We thought we'd receive an interest in the bids before, but we failed to get in the bids. Since we didn't receive in the bids, I do have an email in front of you. He got a copy from Michael Latta and making an offer on the lots. And I think at this time, we need to listen to the attorney and get us some guidance on what to do in order to sell those lots. Mr. Latta has bought the other lots in that subdivision, and I think his desire is to eventually vacate the subdivision and make one parcel of land instead of 16 or 18 parcels of land out of it. So, just to put a house on instead of a group of houses. But if we could let the attorney give us some guidance on where we go from here? We advertise, got no bids, now we have an offer, and if we let the attorney give us some guidance on what to do, how to get rid of these two lots.
Hey, Mr. Attorney, are you ready, sir?
Mr. Chairman, the last meeting, there was some discussion with regards to the White City, or referred to as Wimaco Place. And as I touched on in our ship program, I think back in 2010, 2011, in taking back over that program, there was a project, a finance development project for those parcels that was originally proposed by the former CDC. I think it was over a course of three months, Mr. Chaney was hired by this commission as a consultant from the Florida Housing Coalition. And initially, there was a committee put together in the community by this commission to put a proposal in front of the Florida Housing Coalition with regards to the resolution of those lots. Ultimately, those $59,000 approximately of the acquisition of the parcels had grown to 170 if Florida Housing Coalition would accept the proposal to put homes on those two parcels. We had submitted through the county a proposal from that committee to Florida Housing Coalition, and Mr. Chaney, the proposal or the package to enhance and improve those lots for affordable housing. Upon submitting that, they had sent it up to Rob Dierdoff, his supervisor. We received correspondence back. I've had the last two weeks to go back and review that correspondence and direction from the Florida Housing and the ship program. Ultimately, it was a recommendation that the county not pursue the improvements on those two parcels, but rather put them out for sale and to secure the fair market value for those parcels of what the market would bear, and then to take that, the funds that the county receives and place them back into the ship trust fund. We have that correspondence, we reviewed that, which leads us to where we were at. There was an advertisement, I believe, on the 22nd and the 29th for sealed bids to be submitted to the county, which would be due on the 30th and to be opened on the 2nd, which brings us to today. Right now, we have not received any bids on those parcels. We have received considerable interest from the gentleman that owns the other parcels there, and this segues into the discussion I had earlier with regards to the abandonment of subdivisions and plats. The Florida Statute 177, our Gulf County ordinance for subdivisions, 9809, all speak to steps and procedures that are required for implementing subdivisions and having the county adopt and accept roadways and infrastructure. Specifically, the subsections that the commissioner was asking about the last meeting with regards to dedications, going back through the minutes of the meetings at the time that this was implemented, this subdivision, there never was a formal presentation or an acceptance by this county for those roadways. Our ordinance elaborates on Statute 177, which details the fact that our county engineer needs to come back 12 months after the fact, inspect the roadways, inspect the infrastructure, make a certified presentation to this county commission, and have this county commission accept those 12 months after the fact. In my review, I did not see any of that in the county commission minutes from those meetings of a formal acceptance of any form of dedication. We do not have any bids to present to you today. What I would ask the commission is for direction on how to proceed with the lots. If it's still your intent to sell those lots, as the Florida Housing Coalition has instructed us to do so, and to reimburse the ship program for what proceeds we received from that, we were instructed by Florida Housing Coalition at the time to go out and get appraisals on those parcels. We took their instructions and we secured that, appraisals on the parcels at that time, which is now over a year old, those appraisals, which are part of the ship program and public record. If the will of the commission is to continue to proceed to sell those, I would encourage or recommend you all to do that in conjunction with consideration of that policy that I spoke of. This gentleman's expressed an interest. If you give the staff the authority and the ability to negotiate the sale of these two parcels to that gentleman that's expressed the interest, we can move forward accordingly. If there's a contract to sell these parcels, as instructed by the Florida Housing Coalition, we can make it conditioned, whatever conditions the staff recommends to you in terms of the sale of those two parcels. Possibly, obviously, the abandonment of that subdivision if it's his intent to abandon a plat or something that's been approved or submitted in the past. We don't know his intentions, but we can at least listen to him before we come back to you all with a proposed contract to sell them. I have the appraised value at the time. Obviously, a year's passed. We can hopefully get a comparative market analysis, which they also approved us to do, which is less expensive than an appraisal. We can establish a value to those lots, and then if with your authorization, sit down with him and negotiate a contract.
Hey, board members, you heard the attorney.
I have a question just for clarification. Novak, when you said about county would have to accept that dedication 12 months after the fact, I missed what that timeframe was that started the 12 months. Was it after the plat?
After the final approval of a major subdivision plat. That's correct.
So, after the final plat was approved.
That is correct.
Okay. And I know you were not here then, so maybe, Mr. Butler, maybe you shed some light on this, but I know we had a letter of credit that was put in place as part of us, as a board, of course, I wasn't here either, but approving a final plat. And that letter of credit was to assure that the improvements would be made, the road, potentially the stability stubs, so that you could go forward, and if somebody looked at the plat and purchased a lot, that those things would be in place. So, the letter of credit was never drawn down on. That was finalized in June of '06, after the letter of credit made of '06, which that all makes sense to me. But when we got these, when we bought these lots, May 30th of 2008, that letter of credit had expired a year before and didn't take any action on the letter of credit. And that's my question. We could have at any time, very simply, drawn down on the letter of credit to have that road built, and it was just a matter of sending a letter with the proof that the improvements had not been done to the bank, and there's no defense, so the bank would have paid the money to the county. My question is, why didn't we draw down on that letter of credit, on that money to build that road?
Certainly don't recall details, and this is one of those subdivisions in the, there was a lot of subdivision during that boom time that got approved, and it's probably one of those things that wasn't noticed. It wasn't, I don't know. I'm trying to figure out what it was. Probably went on through and no one questioned it. It just happened, and at some point in time, the developer went away, went belly up. And so, don't know. Don't know what the answer is. I follow your line of thought. But at the same time, my recommendation to this board, it was then, before this happened, April 1998, we had a pretty good ordinance, and I called it, it got watered down a little bit. And what I call watered down is when you allow ones, developers to post bonds, to defer putting infrastructure in until later, it can cause a problem. I would recommend you to go back to what we had done in April 1998 to require all infrastructure to be in place in subdivision before the subdivision is approved. Then you don't have to worry about this kind of thing.
Of course, the developer is, as a business entity, has gone under, but maybe Michael Hammond clearly is the developer, so maybe when he is here, lighten us a little bit on how this happened. Also, when we purchased these lots, it states clearly on the plat that, get it so that I read it properly. The surveyor stated that testing is advised before any design of foundation due to soil types that are unfavorable for building. And when you look at the wetland delineation, entire, more than half of the back half of this development is apparently jurisdictional wetland, and the lots that we purchased are in the back half of that. None of this factors in on the purchase by the Lattas, purchase these lots. But what my concern is, is that, is this going on in other flooded subdivisions in the county that we're not aware of, or that maybe we are aware of, but I haven't seen that? And I know I bring up a lot of issues. All the issues that I bring up have been in District 3, and they're serious issues for District 3, and that's why I've brought them up. I don't know if these same things are going on in the other districts, but I think that we need to address these issues, and we need to remedy what we're doing that's creating problems. I have a lot of concerns about this procedure, and I would like for us to look at any other outstanding developments that are out there, what it might lead us up to. That being said, I am in favor of us negotiating with these folks, because clearly, lots do not have anywhere near the value of what the taxpayers paid for them. It funds our tax dollars, and that's unfortunate. So, it will be a tremendous loss, but they're not doing us any good, and they don't appear to be buildable. I don't see where we can build affordable housing on them when they're underwater, basically. No road. That road is going to be very expensive to build. I really don't know what to say about this. It's just very concerning, and do you know of any other developments like this in the
I'm not sure. I'm not sure, speaking of, the lots been underwater. Now, if you simply look at the National Wetlands Inventory Mount, pretty much you couldn't do anything in Gulf County. It is, I think David would tell you, is in planning. It's a guide to go by, and a lot of times, National Wetlands Inventory Mount will show wetlands, and in actuality, it won't all be wetlands. So, we can only use it as a guide, and even if it is wetland, in so many cases, you can still build a residential house. It's not, it's not the Class 1 wetlands where you're in the middle of a swamp. And that's palmetti. It's not wet there like some places are. But I don't know, I've never been on the property. I know where it is on the mount. All the other properties, land to be subdivided in Gulf County that the National Wetlands Inventory Mount shows is being positively wet, I bet it will be. If you stop any development, anywhere National Wetlands Inventory Mount says wet, you probably wouldn't have any more development. You'd have very little development. So, could it happen? It could happen. It is left up. You can't build in wetlands. You just wholesale go out and build in wetlands, so there's some controls on it. I don't think, while I'm looking at, looking at Liddar, I don't see, you know, a swamp on this piece of land. It's about as high as anything in White City is.
You know, it's not, not very high.
That's true.
But my question was, and I probably wasn't clear, but I was looking more at concern that there's other developments out there that have the final plat, that had no improvements done, that may create issues for us down the road. done, um, that may create issues for us down the road.
Commissioners, uh, I can, I'm pleased to report that this year, um, for the first time, I think in over four years, uh, that predates me, um, that the subdivisions were approved by this county commission and the planning and review board. There was a great law there where there was no subdivisions approved until this year, and I think you've, I think two were on the books this year. For them to come back, obviously, they put the infrastructure in, they put the improvements in. Going back to Mr. Butler's comments, back in 98, there was a baseline and there was a policy in place to, uh, enforce those and come back. Um, I don't know when, how many months down the road, uh, these two subdivisions that were approved this year by this commission, but ideally in 2015, when they come back for your acceptance and adoption of those dedications, there'll be a certification from your county engineer, either signing off on it or not with the bonds that have been posted. But to go back to Mr. Butler's comments, to address your concerns, the simplest way to that point is to reinforce and reapply that 1998 policy, which will be done with this commission's approval when they come back in 2015, these two subdivisions. But prior to that, I don't believe there's been any subdivisions in the last four years that are on our radar.
And, and will you distribute that 1998? I'll see for our review. Again, and I, and I just want to reiterate this for the public, that, that was a letter of credit, not a bond, but a letter of credit for over $193,000 that should have been drawn on back into the public offers to pay for the, the improvements in this piece of land. And as we all know, we need tremendous amounts of work on our roads and our infrastructure, our stormwater management, and this is just part of that. So, I, I think that we need to take this very seriously.
Chairman, can I? I think we have two issues here. I think, I think we have two issues here. Commissioner Bryan brings up a lot of points on what, how we need maybe to change policy or change. Going back to the 1998, the only thing that I would say is, I'd like since, it's since a lot of this is happening in, in Commissioner 3's district to work with staff on, on some policies that you have concerns with going forward and look at the past and see what we need to change and, and come back to the board on policy change. And then on number two, we need to address this issue of how do we go forward? And, you know, I'm, I'm like Commissioner Bryan, I'm, I'm for negotiating with the, with the Lottas and, and giving them the opportunity, uh, to, uh, buy those lots and consolidate that into one. And I think, uh, you know, it's his intent may be to just build one structure on there, but that, that, that would be good. The money goes back to the, the housing ship program, uh, of which they've approved us going forward with that. So I think that's a way to put a few dollars back in the ship program that doesn't affect, I know they are tax dollars, I'm not saying they're not tax dollars, but I think the way ship's funded is through some insurance, premium taxes and that type of thing, but it, it is tax dollars, but it's not property tax dollars. But, uh, you know, we'll get that back into the ship program. But I think with Commissioner Bryan and especially the, the, the problems that she has in District 3, if she'll work with staff on coming up with some, uh, recommendations for policy change, I would caution you, going back to the 98 and going back to not allowing a bond, uh, I think the bond process would work for infrastructure. There just needs to be something in place to come back six months prior to that bond, uh, or the letter of credit running out and coming back and say, where are you at in this process? So, uh, I, I would love for Commissioner Bryan to work with staff on, on those policy changes that she needs to do, but I am for moving forward with selling the property.
And if I mean, in 2007, when the letter of credit expired, I believe if we had followed the procedures that we had in place, we would have called the letter of credit. It really wasn't an issue with our policy, we just didn't follow our policy.
Yeah, I think if we put a timeframe on those, on those letters of credit that, that says, that puts something in place that says you have to come back or the county has to review you six months prior to that running out, that that would at least bring it to the board's attention. We might have the policies in place, but something's got to bring it to our attention. Uh, if we ever get into another boom, uh, to where we're doing a lot of these, you know, we'll need that policy.
And part of that may be just a misunderstanding of, of what a letter of credit really is. And, um, it's important that we have people in positions that understand rules, understand the law and, and understand the responsibility of the position that they're in. And, um, that's something that we, the county administrator, county commission, we're sure that those are the people that we have in, in the positions.
With all that discussion, if the board's ready to move forward, I'd move forward with the recommendation of, of staff to negotiate with the Lottas and, and see where we, where we are and come back to the board and let's try to get this thing done and put behind us and then allow, uh, Commissioner Bryan to continue to look at the policies that we have and how we make sure that those policies are clear down there. Yeah, I'll put in form questions.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Jaeger.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bryan. Put from, sir. Oh, sir, sir, come up, please.
Come up here.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, this is my first.
Come on up. We're glad to have you. Give, uh, over here, just for the record, give your name and address to the-
My name's Michael Latta.
Oh, there you go.
Right now, I live in Fennel City. I'm hoping to move back here and we had lived here before in Overland, who knows me.
All right, sir, proceed.
My wife's Maxine and I purchased these lots, uh, they were fixed and go to auction by the bank. And we got them at, well, I paid $26,000 for all of them, except for the two. So that leaves just, you know, just about, just a little over $1,000 for all, all I've paid for the others. And so, you know, I really don't want any more than that for those two. Because, you know, you know, it's just what the others, you know, what I pay for the others. But I, I would like to have the complete, uh, parcel if I could. And any questions you have, I don't want them flat. I don't want to pay taxes on 18 lots. I still be a family, okay? I've just put a home on, maybe a place for, I got a daughter and grandkids, but I just want to enjoy a place to retire on. And we want to move back to Gulf County. I have to live in, I do work out here at the Cape, the radar site out there. So, you know, I drive back and forth every day, uh, going to work and we just gas prices like it is, we want to move back there. So I would really ask your consideration in letting us buy those lots so we can have the complete package and unplat, get rid of the road and all the other stuff that, and just make it a homestead if we could.
That motion is for you to work with staff on coming up with that number and-
Mr. Latta. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
What you're offering here, it is compatible to what you bought the other lots. Now, tell me, I'm not familiar, maybe I should have went out and looked at it. I'm not, what, talking about any acreage here or lots? You said, how did you buy 16? Freeze this time, please. Uh, it, uh-
Well, the, the paper that I just handed said it was 5.86, but I'm not-
Say what now?
All of it together was 5.86, but I'm not sure if it included your two lots. I'm not sure about that.
Okay, okay. All right, here it is. Thank you. All right, all right. The, uh, the offer here of $2,000 for both, that is compatible with what you paid for the others. Your intention is to build a home, homestead it and, uh-
Unplat everything and-
Unplat it, whoever the road. All right, sir.
And relieve all any responsibility and it'll be ours. I mean, I know I still got sewage and water out there. You know, those costs and all that.
Lots of cities ain't you, I think he is there, so.
So, uh, any other questions? I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to offer to Mr. Latta, a few years ago, we, the county put some time into that to look into those issues, so I'll be happy to share that information we have in our files with Mr. Latta about some of those infrastructure costs and things of that nature and linear footage and all, we have that, so I'll provide that to him as we hopefully iron out a contract.
Good deal. Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you. All right. Now, you have a motion and Commissioner Bryan seconded it, put from the audience on this. Any further discussion? Take a little time, the motion again, quote it.
Uh, the motion is to allow staff to negotiate with Mr. Latta to come back to the board with the number and, and let's, let's get this thing behind us.
Good deal. All right. Clear with the board members. All right, is any opposition to Commissioner Jaeger's motion? If not, motion passed 5-0. Thank you. Butler, you'll have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple more items. Next one, you have a copy of the letter from the Air Force to do with driving on the beach on Eglin properties. What this is, this is a right of entry. Uh, Mr. Jaeger and I have been working on this for the last few months. Uh, today, today, we don't have a right of entry to ride on the beaches at Eglin. They've been allowing us to do it. Uh, we did at one point in time and then about the same time, the lighthouse went out of way, the right of entry went away too. But what this right of entry does, it allows us to access the beach and there's some conditions I want to point out, some new conditions, uh, to access the beach of Eglin, uh, for a year, and then after a year, they will reassess whether or not, whether or not to give us a five-year lease to access the beach on Eglin. And so this is almost like a one-year trial period of time. And, um, and there's, there's some things in here. If you, if you were to turn over to first page four, well, you see there's, there's a lot, I think there's, there's 30, maybe more, there's 33 conditions, but some are new conditions, like number 23.
Take them if you would, ones that's been highlighted.
Okay. The highlighted, uh, number 23, access will be permitted from 9:00 AM to sunset, except during test missions, uh, other restricted periods or when the area is unsafe for public access. We just haven't ever had it written down before, so it, but it's good and clear. We, we like clearing, 9:00 to sunset. And number 24, access is restricted to the area delineated in Exhibit A. And what that is, we have a fence. Gulf County maintains the fence on the east property line of Eglin on the beach. And from that fence back to the west to the tip of the spit, the, the bottom of San Diego Peninsula, um, that's the area we can ride on. Uh, they would not allow us, this does not allow us on the west beach, on the beach where the lighthouse was. And, and the aquatic preserve actually travels all the way down the beach, on the Gulf side, all the way down to the tip of the peninsula, to the southern tip. So the, and you, and there's some other language later on here, um, we cannot ride on the area that's overlapped by the aquatic preserve. So the area we're talking about is from the fence on the east property line over to the tip of the peninsula, the southern tip. Uh, number 26, uh, driving is prohibited on Air Force beaches from sunset to 9:00 AM from one May to one November, and, and the grantee, and Gulf County is responsible for enforcing such prohibition. That's something the sheriff's been doing. Uh, we started the first day of May enforcing that. And, um, but we got it tied down here. It goes a little more deeper than that. Number 27, driving is prohibited on the beach where Air Force property and the aquatic preserve boundaries overlap. That's the western beach, that's the, the lighthouse beach, uh, and Gulf County is responsible for enforcing such prohibition. We're probably have to put signs or something to make sure people don't go any further. The, um, number 28, this is new to us too, maintain the beach signs, removing ruts. We, they've been maintaining the beach signs, but this requires us to put the beach signs on Eglin beaches. And we've been doing it on all the other beaches. I think we have like 100 and something signs up, the do not drive Lambert of sign, dot signs, and this, this puts a requirement we do on Eglin beach too. So it's not, it's not a big requirement. Um, also, removing ruts, we have to keep the ruts removed on Eglin beach like we do any other beaches. And then number 29, issuing a five-year license to the grantee is contingent upon completion of the Habitat Conservation Plan, comma, the issuance of the incidental take permit, comma, and the implementation of requirements and conditions of HCP and ITP, coordinate development of HCP and ITP with Eglin Natural Resources upon contact. So, we're working on the HCP and, and hopefully within what we, I know we're not going to have HCP and ITP completed in a year, but I think if we're making good progress on it, that'd be a good reason to get another right of entry. But this is good for a year and then they go reassess us in a year. Then under 30A, uh, the grantee is responsible for unlocking the gate each morning and locking the gate at sunset each evening. I think we pretty much can have it worked out. Sheriff is locking the gate after he sweeps the beach in the, in the evening. Uh, unlocking the gate, um, our agreement, and I think it's still an agreement, where the turtle patrol is, when they get the beach swept in the morning for turtles, then they leave the gate unlocked. So it's been working and hopefully it keeps working that way because the sheriff's got to send somebody out every morning that's going to take a lot more time to do that. But we think we have that part covered. Uh, number 31, the grantee being, being Gulf County, must post to maintain signs to ensure the public does not enter designated shore, shorebird nesting areas. That's going to be new, but we can do that. And number 32, the grantee must prohibit pets on Air Force property. This is brand new to us because it'd be the only beach we can allow pets on. So, there too is, I mean, it's something I've talked to them about and they're not backing off. So, um, they allow pets on this beach and we'll have to maintain signs. And, um, so that's some of the conditions. And the other conditions are, we've already been going by. But I want to bring that out to you. If the board agrees, the chairman can sign this, we'll get it back to them, we'll get a right of entry for a year. After chairman this executes and the Air Force executes, they send us a copy back, we're good to go for a year, then we'll start working on the rest of it.
Bottom line here is we've worked with them for a while and, um, there's some of these things that I really wish weren't in there, but I understand them, that's, I mean, that's Air Force property. Uh, this area is critical for us too to, to maintain, uh, for the public to go in there because that's where the best fishing is. That's where there's no development at, so you get a lot of the public away from, you know, in front of beach houses and all those kinds of things. So if you ever restrict that too much or, or do away with it, you're going to put more pressure on in front of all the beach homes and all those kinds of things that cause problems. So it's, it's very important for us to continue to work with Eglin, uh, on this. I think there's a couple of things that I'd, maybe we can still talk to them a little bit, uh, Don, on and give us a little leeway. The 9:00 AM on, on, during the time when it's not, uh, turtle nesting season, if we could reduce that to seven, when it's not turtle nesting season, that would be great. Uh, because a lot of people go down there strictly to fish because it's the best fishing area they get down there.
I think that's intent. I think only during turtle nesting season would-
Okay, good. So that's clarified then. Okay. Uh, other than that, I, I think we got to proceed with this and, and go forward, do everything that we can to, uh, make sure everything works well so we can get that five-year renewal. Uh, this, this also includes the roadway that we want, the emergency roadway, Don, or are they, is that going to be a separate one?
This does it. And that, that was the next piece. Now, once we have this in place, this will allow us to get on the beach. Then in order to get the five-year and also get the access, the, um, emergency access that the first responders need, south of the, uh, stump over there, uh, we're going to have to get a survey. And we, we, I've got that in the works.
Okay.
So that'll be, that'll be forthcoming.
That'll be later, okay. With, with that, all that being said, Chairman, uh, if you got anybody else?
Hold on.
Is in there, what about trash cans? Because currently we don't have trash cans past the fence, so if we're putting signs up, is county trash or who's going to take care of trash up?
There's no discussion here, but, um, I guarantee you, the Air Force expects us to keep the beach clean.
I mean, we have, I, I think we have done some of that in the past, so I, I think we would continue that.
Right now, there's nothing out there, so we will put those every, where are they, every?
500. Yeah, and there are some signs already out there for the tur, I mean, for the shorebirds and that type of thing that we won't have to put up. They, they've already put those up.
We have the other signs, we have enough of the other signs, it was just the trash cans that we, and we're just, we see trash, we're picking it up, but we're not going in emptying out trash cans when there's some trash out there.
Okay. All right, well, we may need to put a trash can out there.
Okay.
Also, the conditions in the agreement here, obviously would need to be incorporated in the ordinance to get-
I, I know one of the stipulations in agreement is it's hanging on the HCP and the incidental take permit, um, and they want to get into a long-term, uh, agreement with us. I'll take a look at it. Like I said, I know in 12 months, hopefully we'll have the HCP in place and we'll have the ITP submitted for approval, so we can, if, if, if necessary to have some teeth in the ordinance, we can certainly do that and I can take those provisions. We can amend what we have in terms of driving. what we have in terms of driving.
But for, for now, I think what we need is the, is approval for the chairman to be able to sign this particular document with Eglin. And, and, Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I'll put that in form of motion to allow you to sign that agreement.
All right, this is for a one-year agreement. Motion by Commissioner Yeager. Second by Commissioner Bryan. Anyone in that area, and Don is having discussions on this issue, other from any of the board members. Opposition? Motion for this one year, as five and oh.
Chairman, my last item, to do with affordable housing. Had a good conversation yesterday with Mr. Rick Hayman with the Paces Foundation. I think we got represented here today, Mark Demoss, talked to Mark earlier, and, and he can say it better than I can, but the, what we're looking at, there's a potential for a grant, a home grant, and Mark can explain it, the home grant was, we're talking about six million dollars, and looking for some cash match, like five percent match, and, and if there's a way that Gulf County could assist in the five percent match, whether through the ship program or something, might be able to make affordable housing come in quicker than we thought. But, Mark, if you could, you can say it much better than I can.
Good morning, Mark. If I'd have known earlier, I'd have put you up, up the list, I'd give you a name if you would, over here, this young lady.
Mark?
And who you represent?
The Paces Foundation in Smyrna, Georgia.
Right, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're out of the floor.
Thank you all. Gentlemen, it's kind of a surprise appearance this morning. We are responding to a solicitation by Tallahassee, the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, that they issued just thirty days ago, maybe, maybe actually twenty-one days ago, giving us a July deadline to come in and access.
Can't hear him, try that.
Will this help? Is that any better?
It needs to be a little better.
Try to do this one.
Or if you want.
Yeah, any better? Can you hear it like that? Okay, good, thank you. As I was saying, is that the state, Tallahassee, has come up with a program using about twenty-some million dollars worth of home funds that they get from HUD. And what this is, is this is a form of a very low-interest cash flow only grant, and they're making it available only to small and medium counties. As some of you may know, we made an application on the community's behalf to bring in some affordable housing under the tax credit program. Unfortunately, that program is really a lottery. There are three hundred applicants that come here to Florida every year, they only fund about sixty projects, and once you get over the threshold, you get a lottery number. That's the way it is, it's kind of crazy. It's like playing roulette, and if your number comes up high, you get the money. If you don't, you don't. And unfortunately, we pulled the number in about the seventies, and all the guys from one on up got funded. So we have until next year, we'll have another opportunity to go in with the Gateway Project under the tax credit program. Okay. In the meanwhile, the state has just allocated about twenty million dollars to small and medium counties. We have an opportunity to go in and solicit a six million dollar grant, forgivable loan, if you will. And this, coupled with about two million dollars of private debt, which we can bring to the table, will provide us with somewhere in the vicinity of fifty homes that we can put on the gateway. In other words, we don't have to wait another year and then lose again, if you will, in the lottery. We can get this one in, if we're successful this time, we can get this one underway probably in the next four to five months, is when the award will be made, and then we'll immediately get into the design work on the units. It's a surprising opportunity, we're just the messenger here, and all I can do is call it to your attention, we're your advocate, we know these programs, and here it is, and I'm here today to tell you about it. And whether five percent is a sufficient match, yes, sir?
I got to put a motion on the floor. Actually, I just, will just put a motion on the floor that we just hold off on the clock, because I want...
I'm good, I'm good.
That's, that's quite all right, thank you. And I don't want to burden you with too many technical details either, I'll, I'm trying to give you a brief summary and then let you ask questions, probably be the best way to go about it. But now, we are able to go in and get that, compete for it, because we don't know what other communities are willing to put in to compete. We, we've heard that normally on home funds, a five percent match has been kind of standard. That's why we're here today asking for it, that's about three hundred thousand dollars. That would have to come as a grant, or a low-interest rate soft loan into the project, but that three hundred thousand dollars from your community may, if we compete well, may leverage six million. That's a great return on that small investment. Why am I here asking you for that? We could go to a foundation, like the St. Joe Foundation, we could go to a, 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 a large church, faith-based organization, we could go to a benefactor, there are many people that we could go to, to get this grant, they just don't want it to come from our foundation, it has to be a third party, because they want to see this integrated joint effort going on with communities. We're not here to ask for it today, I'm merely here just to inform you about it, but it is due July first in Tallahassee, and I believe there's another commission meeting, and we're happy to come down and paper you with all the details as we discover them, to make you feel comfortable. And it could be conditioned, of course it would be, meaning that if the grant didn't come through, that money is no longer committed, of course. As I said, we, we think five percent would be very competitive. We don't know for a fact, some other communities might be getting, I don't know, ten percent, but all we can do is start somewhere, and we're willing to do the work, we're willing to do the application, that's what we do, that's how we, we support ourselves, we're not asking for you to do anything other than some time and, and a conditional commitment of those funds by July the first. Thank you.
I have one question, and the five percent is based on the six million.
Yes, sir.
I hear the word forgivable loan, or do I just hear something?
Yes, sir. What it is, is that it's called soft money and affordable housing. And what it amounts to, it's, it's with nonprofits, which we are. You often get benefactors or organizations that will give you money, and they, they agree with what you're doing, but they always have the right to take it back if you stop doing what you said you were going to do. So it's conditional funds. They normally use it, call it either a conditional grant, they can call it a conditional loan. But it's always liable to be drawn back. If you complete the fifteen years, or whatever you say you're going to do, then that condition goes away, and the funds are no longer required back. Yeah.
Any other board members?
I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Mr. Chairman, we got, we got a meeting in two weeks, if we could, and Mark is going to do his legwork on that home grant, see what's, what's out there. Two, we can come back, and I've talked with Brett some on ship, we can come back to you and let you know what you have in the ship lot. And just meanwhile talking, five percent would be great, and if we had five percent, just throw away it right now and be over with. But if we, if we put any money into it, and there was some other organization that could put some money into it, any way you can come up with three hundred thousand dollars would work also. So even though we might not be able to put the money in, we might be able to put some of the money in, and maybe some other foundations or something might be able to put some money in, just while talking. Maybe some shape, form of action, it might, it may work.
That's just...
But we'll come back to you in two weeks.
Very short notice here, and Tallahassee's really got us pinned down here within just, you know, a couple of, three weeks, so, but we'll get back there. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Mark, anything?
No, sir, I think that's fine. If there are any questions, I'll answer them, and of course, I'll be happy to come back as often as necessary.
All right, worked with Mr. Butler over here, and, and from the board, thank you for coming and bringing this to our attention.
You're welcome, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, have a safe trip home.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Please come up.
Just wanted to report back to you, a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Chambers was here with Department of Corrections, Probation and parole, just want to let you all, to report back to you, let you know, we went up, we looked at, we were hitching a substation, and he looked at the back portion of it there, and we're going to be able to make that work for them. We got in there, we cleaned out some storage items, basically, and he's got, fortunately, he's got the equipment, he's got the desk and stuff that would need to go in there. He's only going to need it for a couple of days out of the month for folks to report in. We tried some other options, because we talked about the percentage of his probationers being on the south end of the county, we tried some other options here at courthouse and a couple of other places, but it just didn't seem to work out. That was the logical place up there, there was some room there at the back, it's just going to be occupied just a few days out of the month. Only inconvenience that will be is where the office is there, there'll be restricted access into the sheriff's office portion of it, they'll just have to utilize the restroom that's only accessible from the outside of the building. So we're just doing a few things up there to try to make it a little bit more livable for them, even though the time there is short. But just want to report back to y'all on that.
We found them a home.
Yeah, we found them a home.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff, appreciate it.
And just, just keep something else going, and I haven't had opportunity to speak to any of you about it recently, but...
Can't hear the sheriff.
Okay, better. Just want to report back to you on, a couple of months ago, we went out for proposals for buildings for sheriff's office, obviously, we only received one in, I think y'all were brought, made aware of that, that facility will not work. It, we can't get communications in there, as far as our computers, our connectivity would go in half. We've talked to MediaCom as far as the possibility of running lines out there, they're not even interested or entertaining the thought of doing that. So that option is completely out, so brings us back to square one, may need more office space, and just want to bring y'all up to speed on that and where we stand right now.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thanks, Sheriff. All right, this time, go to board business.
Just one thing, I've covered, I think we've covered everything else, and, and I'll just, I'll pass these down, I think all of you've probably received this email, sometimes they slip by us. This is one that's just asking for a resolution to allow God We Trust be put, placed somewhere in our commission meeting room. There's some information in that email that goes on to discuss where this started, and actually, surprising to me, it started in the state of California, and there's already over three hundred cities and counties that have, have adopted this resolution to put in God We Trust, our, our national motto, in their meeting place. So this is a sample, and this actually came from Tennessee, but if the board would allow the, the attorney to draw up a resolution for our next board meeting to consider that Gulf County be involved with this, and, and, but in God We Trust, somewhere in our, in our board meeting, so, so move to proceed with that resolution.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Yeager, second by Commissioner Ollie, any input from the audience? One from the audience, any more? Opposition? See for this, motion passed five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only other thing I got is, is, seems like the last few months, we've had a little problem with these microphones.
Yeah.
And I know we don't have money that we specifically put into budget for these microphones, but Don, can you see about getting David to, see if we can't get these things fixed? The public relies on the ability to hear these things online and that type of thing.
The system, we bought the system with a grant fourteen years ago, it is gone, it is worn out. We really, but David has some money in his budget, he's been keeping it going on year to year, and we, we milked all that out last year. So, but yes, we'll, we'll figure out what we got to do.
Okay, and come back.
And, and it's not just the microphones, it's the recording equipment in the equipment room, that is going too. It's, we've, we've got to wholesale, it's pretty good expense keeping the recording equipment and the mics going.
I, I just think it's important for the public to be able to hear, and we need to hear from, from the staff on what that cost will be. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I...
Thanks, sir, Commissioner Bryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I would like to bring up the issue of the condition of White City Park. And I am, as many people are out in White City and folks who use the park, we're very concerned about the safety of the dock areas and the wood structures. And I know, Donna, had emailed you about that, and had spoken with the two different folks, and I was hoping that you could give us some type of an update today, and also about the boat that hit the structure, and was wondering if there had been a sheriff's report filed, and what the status is of that damage that was created.
Okay.
Mr. Butler, before we start, I, I just happened to stop by White City, and I did go look at the damages the boat did, and it's going to take two thousand dollars to really repair that back to where it needs to be, but I have looked at it, and...
Yeah, there's two problems. One is, apparently, a barge, and we were notified by FWC, I think Brett can correct me if I'm wrong, or it, but a barge hit the dock and left. FWC knows that we did it, and we got named, Brett, you, I don't know, we, we have, we haven't been able to get any insurance money from them yet. Anything new?
I, I actually got a call yesterday, we filed a claim with, with our company. What they're going to do, we've got a, an adjuster working to work with the group out of Louisiana, their boat hit our dock. The Coast Guard had, Coast Guard had, they've got a police report, along with FWC, worked with them, also worked with Preble Rish, Clay Smallwood, to go get an estimate. He come up with a number around twenty-seven thousand dollars worth of damage. And again, that's just an estimate. Right now, what my thoughts are, talking to Mr. Butler, probably maybe doing an RFP, I guess, on, on the, the repair of that, damage of that boat dock.
I, I think that there are some other issues as well that will need to be addressed in addition to the damage that was done by this situation, but I think that the, the way that the structure was built is not safe. There, there are two different steps there that run the length of the concrete side, and the rises on those two steps, one is a very short rise, one is a very high rise. And I, I think that that lends to some danger. I think that we have some issues with some of the wood underneath that needs to be replaced, structural wood. We clearly have issues with boards warping, and some of the side boards are crooked, even in other places as well. This damage that was done by the barge is tremendous, but we also have some other issues, and I think that all of those things need to be addressed. They're not cosmetic. I believe that in the interest of safety, that we need to find a plan to fix White City Park. And my understanding is, it's, it hasn't really been there that long, the structure, and I'm not sure of how long it is, I haven't really been able to get much information on when it was built and how it was built, but I would just, I'd like to ask, instead of laboring the point here, I would just like to ask Mr. Butler and staff to look at this project and come up with something. We have tournaments there, fearful that if we have a lot of people out there at the same time, we may have some problems, and I just need some help from this board.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Ms. Bryan, you know, Ms. Bryan, you're not aware of this, but actually, before I became commissioner, I'm actually the one that took inmate labor with public helps, public works departments helped, and we actually built that, with inmate labor, and that's been approximately fifteen, eighteen years, it's been a long, it's been a long time. It, it gives you a little bit of history of it. And another thing that's so difficult down there with that, design and all, is you have tide control down there, so it's very hard to, your stepping system... So, it's very hard to, your stepping system, to work that with your tide, it's very hard to get all that worked out. But gives you a little bit of information on it. At least 15, 18 years.
But that is so...
That thing been, but I'm all for it. You know, if, if we need to go in there, if you have broken boards or whatever we need to do, we need to work and, and try to find some money to repair it. I mean...
It, it is an important park, I think, for the whole community. So, uh, I, we just need to find a solution. And I'm happy to work with staff and with Butler.
And if I can make a comment, just unfortunately, the barge hit it and did damage. But that, yeah, I mean, you could, it was visible, the damage. Then we start looking at it to repair and the, the boards, the structural part is damaged. It's almost like a dry rot. It's treaty wood. It's almost like a dry rot. And I would think untreated wood would last longer than that treaty wood did. Something, something happened to this particular wood. And it, Mr. McMoore, it's not the part you put on, it's the part that was put on about three years ago where the new treaty wood was put away at the end of the building. And that's, that part, it was...
Majority of the damage is...
As for the construction, it was, it was well-built. Uh, heavy bars tore it up. But then, in order to repair it, we think we're going to straighten it up. We gotta remove, pretty much remove it all to repair it all. And it's not as simple where, so it costs, it's, that's some bad wood. And something, almost like the treatment in the wood probably damaged the wood. So, it's, it is almost like dry rot. And maybe the step-down boards, that's another issue that Commissioner brought up. Tides, had to put those in place because the tide does let the weight up and down. And maybe that board should be like a, um, sawed wire 2.5 instead of a, a less, uh, treated board and, um, something that will resist water more. And, um, that's the problem too. It's never been a good fix on that because it's such a span. But for some shape, form, fashion, I think Brett is on the trail. Either that barge company's insurance company or our insurance company's gonna wind up paying for it. And then, then we, we get it fixed. If we could, I agree with, uh, Brett's suggestion. We'll go out and RFP and see what the cost would be to get contractors to fix it.
Okay, Mr. Butler, you have any? Or there? Uh, we'll go back to...
Well, I'd like to go ahead and...
You'll need your gentleman. All right.
I'd go ahead and, and make that motion that we go out for RFP, but, um, Mr. Butler, are you saying that we should just go out for RFP for the damaged area or for the entire length of any wood that needs to be replaced?
I think there's dam, I think there's some bad wood on the part that was damaged by the barge.
Right.
So, I think we need to just figure out...
The whole thing?
Probably the entire length.
Right, okay. I, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by, uh, Commissioner Brian, second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any input from the audience? Any other discussion? No opposition? Motion passed five and oh for this. Okay, Commissioner, fine, you're still at the floor.
Um, I, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. McMoore, we'll go here. Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, while we on the, while we on the boat landings, I was just gonna let the public know that the contractors have started on lands, landing projects up there. Uh, and he, here's the problem. Monday, June the 16th, this Monday, June 16th, they're going to have to close that boat landing for repairs to the ramp. So, that's gonna be an inconvenience for us, but if we want it fixed, you know, it, we have to do it. So, anyway, I want, hopefully, they're talking two weeks, hopefully maybe a week, you know, sooner, but either way, I wanna let the public know, you know, that, that they're all, they are gonna start to work on that. So, they already have the docks lit, uh, delivered there to step down, so, so that project's ongoing. And that's, uh, I think maybe a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar project, somewhere in that category that are going into that landing. So, that's gonna be a big plus for us. Uh, another issue I have, Mr. Chairman, I wanna talk about the air conditioning unit in Honeyville Community Center. I don't, I don't know what went wrong when we built that building eight, nine years ago or whatever, but that unit, I'm constantly, during the summer months, I get phone calls when we have that building rented. It's just not cooling. And I have to call maintenance up there, you know? Every weekend, I go up there personally, you know, it's froze over or something wrong. I mean, it just gets hot in there whenever you get a hundred, 200 people in there. Mr. Sims, you were up there this weekend. Uh, it was a little bit hotter than, than what it should've been. And, and I'm just, we need to do something. If we're gonna rent that building, you know, we, we have to find a way to cool it down. And what I'm gonna ask the board today, I found the money for it, I'm gonna ask the board to support me in, in getting, going out. We have a, we have a, uh, bid list or whatever up to $15,000, I think it is, Mr. Butler, on a project like this. I wanna go out and get three quotes from these contractors. I also, and let's get a number in here and see where we at with this, but also I wanna put Mr. Collinsworth in charge of this project. We have to get this building cooled down. And, and like I said, it, it's just every weekend, every summer, you know, I've got to call these boys out. I've got to go up there. I get a phone call. It's just not performed. I don't know if we need to go in there, redo the system that we have, the unit that we have in there. I don't know if we need to put a new unit in. I don't know, but Mr. Collinsworth and those contractors will know whatever it takes to cool that thing. I'm gonna put it into a motion that the board let me go out there and, and let's get this problem resolved.
I was taking for discussion, you say you found some money in a specific line item?
Yes, I see it...
Yes, ma'am. We got a motion by Commissioner McMoore, second by Commissioner...
Oh, with, uh, Mr. Butler concerning this and we have maintenance infrastructure in, in our maintenance departments and all, we have monies for this type of stuff. And, uh, that's what I'm gonna ask the board to let me do.
I just, I, I know, I didn't want it to be that fund that we, we put for the roof at, uh, Cape Palms Park. I, I think that's a separate fund and it, Don, so just wanted to make sure that wasn't the money.
I, I don't know what it's gonna take to cost, you know, to, to fix it, resolve the problem. That's why I'd like Mr. Collinsworth to really be on top of this, work with his contractors. Let's see what's gonna fix the problem. Yeah, I don't wanna address this today and do a halfway fix on it. I wanna go ahead and let, while we at it, let's fix it, let's fix it right like it should be. The word myself and Mr. McDaniel don't get the phone calls. We have to go down there and defrost it and pour water on it and whatever. That's my motion.
That's the second stance.
Okay, your second stance, all right. Any, any of the public, all right, here on discussion, uh, gentlemen, what we need to do is, uh, go in and figure the square footage is one unit enough to, have we got a bad unit? Do we need another unit? And ever, how many people, uh, building is designed, well, you have to factor that. So, they have, uh, these people can go in and give you the tonnage you need to adequately cool that building now. In real hot summer months, when the temperature gets over 90-plus degrees here, efficiency drops out on all units. That's just, we just have to live with that. But, Mr. Collinsworth, you need to do that before we just go up there and sock another unit in. We do a study on that and, and factor in the amount of people and, uh, people setting is one thing. People are moving around, that generates, uh, heat, so...
Let's go with that. We got a motion...
We have a, we have a 1.2 million dollar building up there.
Yeah.
Let's cool it.
Stay up there for the weekend. All right, we got a motion here, motion here. You have discussion, no opposition. This motion passed five and oh. Okay.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes, um, I'm just sitting here thinking about Mr. Hayman who, I spoke about the affordable houses. And I just wanted to throw something on the table to the commissioners. I know we're working very hard, got many peoples in the community working very hard to bring jobs, to bring jobs within Gulf County. But, uh, and ain't nothing wrong with that. We need the jobs in Gulf County, but I'm keep looking about bringing in the jobs. We got a problem with people having some, well, to deal. But what I'm saying is with Mr. Hayman bringing this in, he talking about dropping $8 million in Gulf County. I mean, you drop it in Bay County, that probably wouldn't seem like much, but you drop it in Gulf County, that's, that, that, it'll put a dent in the pot. I just like you guys to just, you know, keep that in the back of your mind, think about it and, um, see what we can do to work with them to try to get these affordable homes in here, because that's gonna be the jobs coming in here. Uh, um, and, um, other than that right there.
That it, Ms.? Thank you. Uh, board members, I have one thing I need to bring primarily to the attention of the people. We know, uh, we're a small community. We don't have three big major, uh, TV affiliates. Uh, we have one weekly newspaper and, uh, two little, uh, local sites we can look at. But when we switched over from the county negotiating and contracted with Waste Pro. Now, yesterday, I spent a good portion of my time with representative with Waste Pro in the north end of the county. Waste Management has somewhat really disappointed me and I think others. There're cans everywhere, there're loaded cans. They did not give Waste Pro, my opinion, a correct address list, because we've got places that they don't have a can. Uh, and Waste Management's cans are sitting everywhere. They haven't picked them up. I have one they haven't picked up. People are, they gotta put the garbage, they don't know where to put it in. Waste Management, Waste Pro, and, uh, I just wanted to go out to the public, uh, if they have to, they can call down the county office and we'll direct them or call on these commissioners, we'll direct them. I've told everybody up there, call me and I'll, uh, that I see and I'll get them some service. These people with Waste Pro are working out there right today trying to go and there's houses with addresses that's not on the list that Waste Management forwarded to Waste Pro. So, we've, we've got a problem here with this. Need to get them, notify them, they need to, especially, I was in, uh, over, uh, I live right next to the district, uh, uh, community there in, uh, Auburn District 1 in there. Cans are everywhere. Waste Management should bring a garbage truck and also a truck with a trailer to, and when it dumps. But Waste Pro has actually took Waste Management's garbage, dumped it out of their can and the Waste Pro's can and picked it up, which convenient the people. So, I don't know what we need to do on this, but Waste Management needs to get in there, get over here and get their cans, because if we have to go pick them up, then we're gonna ask for some good compensation from them. Mr. Butler, notify Waste Management they are not living up to what they said they would do. All right, Commissioner, you... Yes, sir.
I'd like to address the commissioner on this particular issue.
All right, come on up, sir. Give us your name, lady over here.
2481 Highway 71 North, Weewahatchka, Florida.
2481, did you say?
2481.
Okay.
I run a commercial RV park and a trailer park...
I know where you at.
And the Weewah trading post.
Bet you.
I have not gotten any Waste Pro cans whatsoever. My trailer park is full of Waste Management cans. They have not been picked up. We started calling last Wednesday. We've called six times and no one from Waste Management will come and pick up the cans. Uh, my park has got trash all over the ground. The cans are overflowing and it's a real problem. I can't get my new cans from Waste Pro and I can't get the old cans from Waste Management picked up. And it's impacting my business.
Sir, that will be addressed as soon as this meeting is over.
And I called Mr. Butler's office yesterday because I had already called those companies four or five times and I spoke to his secretary and I still got no resolution.
I'll take care of that for you, because I got a direct line to the gentleman. It's in the area right now.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. That's what we're having, that's what we're having to do, you know? Each commissioner, I know myself and Mr. McDaniel, we're having to just take it one step at the time. You know, I, I get a phone call, have a dozen of stuff out of Harris Creek, I've gotten them from White City, I've gotten them here and, and I, I know we just personally, we, we working with Rick, Rick Payne, who has been tremendous for us, but, but he gets it done. Uh, or he has for myself, I, I know, so... But again, Waste Management must be notified and they need to get their, pick up their garbage and get their cans out, because if we have to go do it, they're gonna be, we may have to take litigation against them. We don't wanna do that. They should live up to their, their agreement. Uh, any, any garbage issue? All right, well, that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We've had a request with Dr. Pat Hardman in reference to the Cape San Blas Lighthouse, please. Speak.
Okay, well, sure, I'll fix and go to the...
I'm sorry.
Audience anyway. Dr. Hardman, you wanna go first?
(inaudible).
All right, we're in the public now. Go ahead.
(inaudible). Thank you for making the effort to keep the historic Cape San Blas Lighthouse on the Cape. You, you really hang it, hung in with Willis for the two years. We really believe that the elected officials, uh, have dramatically undestimated the anger and the frustration of the South Gulf County residents and voters that we have in regard to the relocation of the lighthouse to town. And that includes many of the residents in the city who would prefer that their city commission use the funds and efforts to give them clean water, affordable housing, flood control and management of the existing parks that they have. We feel unfortunately that the city outmaneuvered us, the county and us, when they got the, a lighthouse needed to them. We felt that that was, way that was done was both unethical and immoral. It's overdone. We fought for two years to save the history and the lighthouse on the Cape did not prevail. This is and was not about saving the lighthouse. That was accomplished by moving it to Salinas Park. This was about the city fathers believing that they can make financial gain by making it a part of their amusement park overlooking the rooftops in town. There are two issues. One, moving the lighthouse off of the Cape, which destroys its history. It would be like moving the historic Weewah courthouse to Cape, uh, Port St. Joe to make it a part of the park. The other is the cost for the taxpayers. All state, federal and local funds in the city or the county's coffers are taxpayers' money. It's not your money, it's not the commission's money, it belongs to we taxpayers. That's the only way it got there. I had initially said that it was gonna cost from between 901 million to move it to town based on the work that Warren and I did to keep it out at Salinas Park. And the mayor sent me a scathing email claiming the maximum cost was going to be 325,000 dollars. To date, over 700,000 K has been spent, a thousand dollars has been spent or obligated to the units that have not moved to town yet, with many issues still on the table.
I gotta move second any other opposition. Continue on, Dr. Hardman.
At this point, 550 has been dedicated to, uh, GAC and 170 to Duke, a thousand to Duke Energy. The city commission still does not know how much the bottom line really is. It will ultimately flip it close to that 1 million dollars that I said. Now, to the bottom line of all of this, the new state grant that they had put in the budget, state budget this year... state budget this year, will require that you agree to the new location being in town. We are not going to ask you to vote against that. We are going to ask you to do something rather simple for us. We're going to ask you to make a motion today simply stating that you as a commission be, believe that the Cape San Blas Lighthouse should have remained on the Cape at Salinas Park. And two, that the county will not offer any financial or manpower support from any funds to move or provide future support to the City of St. Joe Lighthouse in the city. Very simple. At least a moral victory. You don't not fight just because you don't have a chance to win. You fight when something's wrong. I'll- That all, Dr. Hardman? That it? All right, thank you, dear.
I'll, I'll address a little bit of that, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we, we have fought, you know, the county did fight to, to have it at Salinas Park. At the end of the day, it was awarded, uh, and deeded to the City of Port St. Joe. We've, we've sent letters stating that, you know, while the city, if they could not fill their obligation, the county would take it. Uh, uh, so we went through a process with that and the processes went through and, uh, we are where, where we are now. I understand what you, what you may want is, is just a, a reiteration is we would have preferred that, uh, the lighthouse to stay in at Salinas Park, which, which we would have, we'd have, we've, we'd have preferred that. Um, and I'm glad you didn't ask for this board to hold up that two-hundred thousand. It's appropriation, it, uh, we're all about preservation of that lighthouse and whether we believe or not believe that it's, it's in the best place, one or the other, it's, it's, you know, it's appropriate to, to work together to make sure that that, that structure is safe. And so, uh, going forward, if, if, if you want those two items, uh, for the board to say, to, to reiterate again, you know, we would have preferred, uh, that they stayed here. And I think we've always said that we weren't going to, uh, commit county tax dollars to that move to the City of Port St. Joe. So all, all that would be doing is reiterating what we've already reiterated, so I don't, eh, you want that in the form of a, 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 of a motion to reiterate that we would have preferred that it stayed on the, uh, on the Cape and, uh, we don't, don't commit county tax dollars? I mean, that's, that's already what we're doing, if you want that in the form of the motion. And I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about this. You may want to comment before we even make a motion.
Yes, I'd like to go to the attorney with this issue because this is a vote and this is something I think we needed advice on. I don't want us to go out there and make a motion and make a vote and we do the wrong thing.
Mr. Attorney?
Commissioner, respectfully, I'm gonna ask you a question with the question.
Sure.
I believe the request is for a resolution or a voice of this commission expressing its opinion, which is a resolution. This commission today expresses a, a statement. Um, I, I will certainly talk to Dr. Hardman. My concern is this, as Commissioner Yeager has first expressed, we've sent more than one letter, uh, showing your cooperative spirit. They, the county submitted an application for that originally before the, it was awarded to the city. Um, prior to you passing a resolution, and respectfully, Dr. Pat, you don't want to jeopardize that funding. And so if there is any contradictory language in that resolution that you're about to pass, somehow you, you foul up that appropriation. I think Dr. Pat says she doesn't want to hold up the funding. I don't know how the commission feels about the funding, but if you, if there's a, uh, an appropriate language that you want to say that historically you wished it was out there, we can work on that. But until that funding is in place and, and we can work with the CCA and Dr. Pat and the folks that feel strongly about the location of that, uh, lighthouse. Um, but that, that would be my concern, Commissioner, is prior to that appropriation being approved, because that was a condition that the county and the city both mutually worked together for that two-hundred thousand dollars.
And with that advice from him, I'd, I'd like you just sit on this.
Let him work with the CCA.
Right.
The whole language. All right? Anyone else from the audience? Mr. Butler?
Mr. Chairman? Didn't realize Millie Smith was gonna be in there.
Yeah, I thought-
Audience today. And, and we did have a good meeting last Wednesday, and we talked about it on, on county commission meeting on Thursday, about the, uh, two-hundred acres of land and, and we, and I haven't talked to Millie since then, but make sure Millie knows, we, we have made contact with EDA in Atlanta. Um, we, we, that day we made contact and we, uh, after county commission gave the blessings, we, um, we haven't heard anything back from them yet, but we expect to soon. It won't take them long to, um, to, to say yea or nay on the use of industrial park building for that training program. But I don't know if Millie's got anything to say or not, but, but we did, again, we did have a good meeting Wednesday.
Good, okay, all right. Anyone else from the audience? Thank you, Mr. Butler, for recognizing that.
Just one other item.
Sure.
Been talking with the sheriff, uh, he still, he still has his security problem. And some shape, form or fashion, there's no security. You walk in the door and you, you're there, face to face. And I'm not sure what the answer is gonna be. We, we go out for bid and we, there's, we, we don't get a good bid on a, on a building. And not sure what the answer is gonna be. At some point in time, we've, we gotta face this security issue. It's been going on a couple of years now. And been going on longer than that, but the sheriff's been here a couple of years in this, uh, it's been his problem since then. But some, we gotta figure out one day some security for his employees, he and his employees, as you walk in their front door. But somehow, I think we gotta talk about space and, and again, the, to me, to Don, the most logical space for the sheriff would be in these, in this old health department building where supervisor's election is now. That's, that's gonna be your cheapest and, and it'll handle him the next twenty-five years, but, but I just want to make sure, security, we need to talk about security at some point in time.
There again, I-
What I'm saying, I want to build a new building now.
I, I, I think that, uh, sheriff and the staff needs to work together a little bit and, and provide options to the board. I mean, I can go out there and look and, and, but, but work with the staff and the sheriff, y'all work together, come up with a couple of options, whether it's construction of a new building, whether it's utilizing one of the buildings that we have on the backgrounds here, might be appropriate, uh, I don't know. But I, I think that continue to work with staff. It is a problem, and it has been a problem, so, uh, we need some, the board needs some options before we can, uh, make a decision. So if you'll come up with two or three options, this board will make a decision.
Just a, just a joke now, but sheriff, you are security, y'all wear a gun.
Guns. Let's go.
Well, I mean, could we, I know Redo went to jail when you walk ten feet down from the sheriff's office. I mean, you just don't walk in there, you have to buzz yourself in, so, I mean, is that something that we can look at for a temporary fix? Fix where just can't nobody just walk in?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a temporary fix for right now for what we got, but, I mean, ten feet down and all to get into jail, you mash a button and they-
Staff's gonna look at it. Anyone else from the audience? Anyone else, Mr. Mclemore, you got the floor?
I'm gonna move you home.
Oh, do what? Oh, yeah, on the value adjustment board, uh, Mr. Yeager will represent the chair because the chair is up for reelection this year, and so I've asked Mr. Yeager to sit in my, as, uh, do what?
Sorry. Was to bring that up and I apologize.
Do what?
Said I apologize, I was supposed to bring that up and I-
Okay, well, we got it covered right here, but, uh, notify Mr. Hanlon, send Mr. Hanlon a letter that, uh-
This is two different things, I think you may be talking about, Mr. Sheriff. She's talking about the value adjustment door.
No, I was talking about the, on the, uh, canvassing board, the only value adjustment board, uh, we tried another round? You and I? Done good.
Yes, sir.
My correction, we got that huge here.
Yes, sir, I don't mind saying, I don't, I don't mind.
All right, just put, uh, the chair and Commissioner Smiley on the value adjustment board, put Mr. Yeager on the canvassing board and the chair, the chair is supposed to sit, but the chair is up for reelection this year. Notify Mr. Hanlon now, we, we got all that straight.
Raphael, I think he's been doing it, I think Eugene's, he's not here, he's-
Put him back on it.
Yeah, Mr. Eugene, that'll be good.
Yeah, we'll put him on it.
Glad to hear that.
We would. Anything else, Ms. Roberts?
I, I got a motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor for Mr. Raphael to, uh, Mr. Eugene, Eugene Raphael, and Eugene Raphael, second by Commissioner Yeager, any opposition, any public, if further here, if not, motion passed five and oh.
I wish we had lots of those citizens work like Mr. Eugene.
That's true.
Call on him, he'll come.
All right. Can I go to Mr. Mclemore now? Motion to adjourn, second by, everyone, thank you for coming out, we had a good meeting.